Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular meeting of Bedford City Council, February 1st, 2021. And if we could all start off, join me in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Here.
Fleuharty?
Here.
Miesak?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Cochi?
Here.
Spinks?
Here.
Uh, council, before we get into the regular meeting, I just want to take a moment and uh honor Rich Novak, passed away last week. Uh, Rich was, Rich was quite an active member of our, uh, our community. He was also a member of our civil service board and a member of the Bedford Historical Society and uh he was one of those local guys that just jumped in and helped with everything when, when something was needed and and I want to extend our condolences to his wife Louise and his sons and all their family. Uh, it's just a sudden loss and uh it's just a terrible thing and uh, but I wanted the family to know we are thinking about him and uh, to pass along our condolences. Now, if we can, uh, we'll get onto business. Uh, council, you have the minutes of the special work session of January 12th, 2021. Are there any corrections? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Janutus? Uh, clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fleuharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the work session of January 19th, 2021. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, the motion for acceptance by Janutus, second by Miesak. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fleuharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of January 19th, 2021. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can we have a motion for acceptance? By Janutus, second by Fleuharty. Clerk, call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fleuharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And at this time, um we're gonna have a special presentation for uh Martin Luther King Day. Uh, I know it's a couple of weeks late from the normal holiday, but uh, we couldn't quite work the logistics out for the last meeting. But uh, I think you'll know why I wanted to, to do this even though it is late. Uh, we have a special young man here, Jaden. And uh, Jaden is the son of Doug Dressman and Jennifer Schoff, who is also a Bedford graduate. And Jaden placed first in the regional Martin Luther King oratorical contest last January and qualified for states, which I understand they were suspended because of the COVID. Uh, additionally, he received a superior rating competing this summer in the Piano Guild. Um, see why he's a, and I'm not done yet. This makes me tired just reading what he's up to, this young man. Uh, he loves both baseball and soccer and is hoping to play again in the community this spring, aren't we all? And during this pandemic, Jaden has learned how to play golf. He loves to travel, read, play video games, and continue to learn. And thank you to the community for your support. Uh, Jaden, that, that's quite a resume for a young man. And we are quite proud that you are a member of the city of Bedford community. And uh, and I want to congratulate you on your winning that contest last January. And when I saw you deliver this speech, uh, I was totally blown away and and I thought this is something everybody should see. And um, also while you're, while you're watching uh Jaden do this, listen to the words, the words of Martin Luther King, because they speak volumes and if we all listen to these words, uh, we'd all be better off. And with that, uh, Jaden, you have anything to say before you start?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Cochi. Um, so I wrote a uh SMA to start the speech, but uh, yeah.
Well, whenever you're ready, okay?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council and community members. My name is Jaden Schoff Dressman of the fourth grade. I'm nine years old from the university school. Thank you to Mayor Cochi for inviting me to speak this evening about Martin Luther King Jr.'s legacy. My topic is, where would we be, where will we be? Where would we be if Martin Luther King Jr. didn't sacrifice for us? Where would we be if he didn't organize a boycott of the bus? Where would we be if he wasn't? If he didn't lead his march in Washington DC? Where would we be if he didn't ignore the people who judged him by his skin color and said, who's he? Where would we be if Martin Luther King Jr. did not win the Nobel Peace Prize? Where would we be if his heart was not such a tremendous size? Where would we be if he wasn't inspired by Mahatma Gandhi? Where would we be if he did not use his words to fight peacefully? Where would we be if he hadn't reacted, if he had reacted differently when his house was attacked? Where would we be if he not used his words to peacefully fight back? Where would we be if he didn't protest and go to jail? Where would we be if Martin Luther King Jr. had failed? Where would we be without his famous "I have a dream" speech? Where would we be if he wasn't a preacher using big words to teach? Where would we be if he wasn't so smart? Where would we be if he didn't lead with his heart? Where would we be if he didn't use music and sing? Where would we be if he didn't shout from the mountaintop, let freedom ring? Where would we be if he didn't strive for change? Where would we be if he fought anger with rage? Where would we be if Martin Luther King Jr. did not have a strong faith in God? Where would we be if he did not support other freedom fighters with the not? Where will we be if we don't stand up for ourselves and others? Where will we be if we don't all treat each other as sisters and brothers? Where will we be if we don't have faith and hope? Where will we be if we don't live our lives through the words of his quote? When the history books are written, someone will say, "The black people who had courage to stand up for their rights." In my opinion, we should all join together as blacks and whites. Sooner or later, all the people of the world will have to discover a way to live together, said this great man. I have faith that together as one, we will take a stand.
Thank you, Jaden, awesome.
That was awesome. Thank you.
That was very good. And uh, I, I can see big things in the future for you, young man. And uh, keep up at it and all your other endeavors that you're in and uh and keep going with your schoolwork. We, uh, we're so proud of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and thanks for being with us tonight. Thank you, Jaden.
Good night.
Good night. All right, Doug, thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody. That was great. Well, thank you, Jaden, if you're cutting out, thank you. Good job.
Okay.
Thank you, very good.
Wow. What, what, what a young man, wow.
He's awesome.
I get tired of reading his summary there, he's, he's into everything. Probably be sitting in this seat pretty soon. Maybe by the time he gets to 10th grade, right? Uh, okay. Kind of hate to get down to, to regular business, kind of anticlimactic right now. But we, we will, under old business, uh, we have ordinance number 9842-21 and ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Axon Enterprises, Inc. for the purpose and implementation of dash cameras and body cameras for the police department in declaring an emergency. I have a motion for suspension, please, by Janutus, second by Spinks. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fleuharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Saunders?
You're muted.
You're muted, Don. Yeah, somebody muted me too, and I had to get it changed.
Uh-oh.
Mike, you, you override him or?
Cause you're muted too.
Don, can you hear us? You're muted, you're muted.
He's trying.
There we go. The mouse wouldn't work.
Oh.
I need to get a separate mouse from the computer.
We, we need a yes or no from you.
Yes.
For the whole game.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Fleuharty, second by Miesak. Uh, Mike, you wanna explain this?
You're muted, Mike.
Mike, you're muted.
Sorry. That goes to Snowpaw. This is a follow-up from the last meeting and something we discussed during the budget process of um, implementing both dash cameras and body cameras for the police department. Um, we've looked at this, uh, we've researched this over the last few years. Um, you know, I, I think from um, an operational standpoint um, for the officers, for the public, from a transparency standpoint, um, safety standpoint, this is a, a good thing and a good thing for, for the community and for the department. Um, we went out and we obtained three separate quotes. Um, Axon being one of the companies, um, as well as two other companies. Um, I want to commend Frank Gambosi, did a great job breaking it down, um, as far as the costs. Um, and when I, when I talk about that, we're not only dealing with hardware, we're dealing with maintenance, we're dealing with licensing fees. Um, Chief Stempel has done an outstanding job with um, the, the senior staffing over there as far as working with the state of Ohio to, to um, establish policies and procedures. Um, there's a lot of things that have to go into this um, endeavor, especially with the data. Um, that data having to be stored, uh, making sure we have ample amount of storage. Um, so again, as we, as we move forward, this has been a goal for us. Um, and I think the administration and council, as we've talked about it, uh, we'd like to implement it this year. Um, breaking it down, um, you know, Axon, um, you know, over a five-year period. Um, but that first initial year, um, being at $104,000, um, is for, is the cheapest of the three, and then obviously maintaining these, um, this equipment. We would get new hardware from Axon in year three, we would get additional new hardware from them in year five. Um, based on demos, um, based on, um, our research in, in contacting other company or other cities that utilized Axon, um, and getting information on, on the other two companies. Um, in all, it's our recommendation to move forward with this, um, and enter into a contract with Axon, um, to outfit all the officers with body cameras and all of our police cruisers with dash cameras.
Okay. Any questions for Mike? Seeing none. Uh, clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fleuharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And uh, now we'll get to reports. Before we jump into reports, I just want to say, uh, shout out to Bob Spinks on his birthday. It was uh, yesterday, no, Friday. Friday, same day as my grandson, that's why I remember. And Bob's usually sitting in the front row here in the council chambers, but nobody's in the front row or any row with, it's still weird after a year of doing, almost a year doing this. Uh, I just wanted to say happy birthday, Bob.
He's sitting in the living room watching TV.
Oh, okay. Well, good for him. And uh, reports, uh, Mike Malice, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, got a, a few items here, first, I just want to commend Jaden, that was a tremendous presentation. Um, and, and the words, as Mayor Cochi said, when you listen to those words, they really, um, they, they, they really send a message and, and kudos to you, young man, um, definitely outstanding. Um, just some updates on, um, some projects that are upcoming and, and capital improvement projects. Um, I do want to indicate that the county, uh, did release a couple of weeks ago, uh, the Tree Canopy Grant for this year. Uh, for those that recall, um, we did apply for this last year, planted um, 100 and some trees throughout town in area where we removed old ash trees. Um, our staff is already working to, uh, submit another application for this grant. Um, and we will be working to identify the areas, um, um, as, as we complete the grant application. So I'm, I'm confident, um, that we, uh, will be able to submit something good and hopefully get funding to plant some more trees. Um, so, uh, that is one project. Second project, um, we've been notified from Dominion East, Ohio, that they're gonna be looking at a mainline gas replacement, um, in the area of Woodrow and Washington. Um, they did submit the plans for us. Now, we do know they, they still have some restoration work to, to finish on, on one of their other projects. And we have indicated to them that, you know, we really can't start this, um, at least until after April. But that project will be coming, um, to Bedford, um, this year. And again, um, those, uh, property owners that'll be affected will get notification, um, and it will be um, through Dominion East, Ohio, uh, and their contractor. Um, and just again, as a follow-up, uh, that area that'll be affected will be Washington and Woodrow. I want to touch base, uh, regarding some major projects that we're working to plan, um, from an infrastructure standpoint. Some of these have been, um, in the works for a few years, um, and others we're, um, working on planning now for this year. Uh, first and foremost, we are gonna be moving forward with our road program this year, uh, with an estimated budget of, um, 400, roughly about $400,000. Um, we've identified three streets already, but we're gonna be looking to identify more, um, depending on what those estimates come in at. We'll be looking to, um, do an assessment, um, in the coming months when the weather breaks. We were also, uh, excited to get confirmation from Cuyahoga County, um, that they will indeed be resurfacing Union Street this year, um, in 2021. Um, but yeah, plans for that is going to be, uh, it will be extended. It's not going to be Northfield to Broadway, it's actually going to be Broadway to Broadway. The entire strip of Union will be resurfaced, um, in 2021. Um, we are looking at when that project can go out to bid, um, and we'll be working closely with Cuyahoga County, um, with that project. We will, uh, we are anticipating a contract coming over from them um, that we'll need to sign and obviously pass legislation, but that'll be coming. Um, hopefully in the next couple of meetings, we'll have that on the agenda. We are also looking to do a major water line project, uh, through the historic district. Um, we need to, um, abandon a, a water line that was put in in the late twenties, early thirties, and obviously connect all of those, um, properties that feed off of that line. It's gonna be more extensive work that, that comes into play with this. Uh, we're looking at budget, we're looking at cost estimates, and obviously to see what other, um, what other improvements in the downtown area that we can do. The reason we're targeting this in 2021 is, you know, we anticipate ODOT, um, in the coming years to come in and resurface Broadway, and we want to make sure our infrastructure is covered, uh, before they embark on that project. So, a lot of this is a planning, from a planning standpoint, um, and we're doing that now. Um, I want to commend, um, Dr. Selico and, and Bedford City School Board and, and the entire administration. Um, you know, I had the opportunity to, um, participate or attend, I should say, attend a grand opening that they had last week, and they unveiled a school resource room. And, you know, I'll tell you what, it, it, it's one thing that we always talk about here in, in Bedford is, you know, obviously, you know, we're, we're here to help and, and give back and, and try to help those in need. And, you know, this room is, is really for, you know, members of the district that, you know, may need assistance, maybe it's clothes, maybe it's, you know, essential items, food, all of this. Um, you know, a lot of it was put forth, uh, through grant dollars, um, there were some donations. Um, they worked with some other organizations and, you know, i- i- it's a tremendous asset, I think, to the district and, and, and to the, to the public and, and members of all of the communities that are part of the district. And I just wanted to, to commend them for that, it's a, a great thing to establish there. Um, I also want to mention, um, regarding vaccine, we have not received any information regarding, uh, vaccine availability. Um, what we are hearing is, um, Cuyahoga County health officials are urging, uh, patients. Um, what, again, I, I reiterate to everyone, um, please contact your primary caregiver if you're looking for vaccine information uh, for the coronavirus. Uh, you can also follow the Cuyahoga County Department of, um, the Health Department, but you can also look at, you know, the local drug mart, local, um, other, or, um, businesses that are taking signups. Um, but if, if you are someone that feels that you are at risk, uh, please contact your primary caregiver and, and they can offer you, um, you know, the best advice as far as how to go and get signed up. Uh, and lastly, I just want to, uh, reiterate, um, what Mayor Cochi mentioned, um, in sending, you know, on behalf of the administration and, and myself, the condolences to the Novak family. Um, Rich was a huge member of the Bedford community, uh, volunteer, member of the Civil Service, um, Commission, and, you know, he will be greatly missed and, and want to send our condolences to the family. Um, he will definitely be missed. End of report.
Thank you. Uh, John Montello, our law director.
Thank you, Mayor, I just, uh, want to congratulate Jaden and wish Bob a happy birthday. Wish everybody good health, not just our elected officials, but everybody in our community. I would urge you all to continue the social distancing and uh, my personal opinion is to get the shot, but whatever, for what it's worth. But anyway, I wanted to thank Tracy and the administration for, uh, working hard this week to get all of this, uh, legislation done, it was, uh, you know, it was a lot of work, believe it or not, I'm not, not believe it or not, but it was a lot of work. And, uh, thank you all for your help. End of report.
Thank you, John. Our finance director, Frank Gambosi.
Yeah, Mayor, uh, Mike, uh, you both spoke, uh, really wonderful about Richard Novak and, uh, I had the pleasure of working with him on civil service for over 30 years now, and he was on the board way before my time and, uh, pushing 40 years. And he's been responsible for a lot of hiring of good police and firemen over the years and, uh, you know, he did a wonderful job for our city and, uh, really appreciate his efforts over the years, and he was very good to work with and chairman of our group, uh, for many, many years. Uh, also, just before his passing, I mean, just to show how his work ethic was, uh, a couple of days before, we were able to pass some new laws and legis, um, rules and regulations in regards to allowing lateral transfers for our police department and our fire department, which we'll be taking advantage of right now. We have, uh, actually some advertisements out there for our police officers to, uh, be able to lateral transfer to the city of Bedford and, uh, some specific language this evening on, uh, legislation in regards to, uh, pay and, uh, time, uh, used that we came up with in our, uh, uh, some recommendations for council and the city. Uh, so I thank, uh, Richard, his family, and I condolences, go out to the family of his passing, and, uh, he will be missed, thank you. End of report.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Janutus?
Thank you. Well, uh, my condolences also to the Novak family. Um, I didn't know Rich for a while, but I saw him everywhere, he came to all the council meetings, and I tell you, he always had the most welcoming smile, that man was always smiling, and yeah, he, he will be missed dearly. Um, I have to say, Mr. Malice, the, the city, even though it's shut down with COVID, you really have some really good projects lined up, uh, in the future. So I, I really have to congratulate you and your staff for all of that, because there are some really exciting, good things happening, uh, in and around Bedford that, uh, people will, will soon, soon recognize. Um, Jaden, I gotta tell you, we're, that was really great, so thanks to the mayor for bringing Jaden to us, because that was so inspirational, I tell you, where would we be without the Jadens of the world? That's where, that's what I want to know. I mean, what, these kids are so remarkable, I mean, when it comes to things like, uh, race, the new generation, these kids are colorblind, they don't, they don't have that, they don't have the leftover racism that so many, uh, some of the older individuals have, the Janutus. So, I think things are going well, and when, when I encounter someone like Jaden, I, I know that uh, we're, we're gonna be in good hands in the future, it's, it's a really hopeful thing, so congratulations to Jaden, that was great. And uh, lastly, a little tidbit. Back in my day, when I was, it seemed like I was as young as Jaden, one of my big interests uh, in my life was studying ancient civilizations, and I had the, uh, opportunity to travel extensively around Mexico and Central America, and I always wanted to see all the ruins of all these great cities and whatnot, because it was scarcely talked about in school. So this, this month, we have, uh, Black History Month, and, uh, and I, I think it's unfortunate that, uh, so many of us, uh, think that black history uh, in America starts, uh, when the slaves were stolen and brought here, because what I discovered was that the first great civilization in North America was a black civilization. They were called the Olmecs, and they flourished somewhere around, uh, 1200 B.C. to 400 B.C. And low and behold, who knows that the first great civilization in North America was a black civilization? And if you were, and it's a really interesting story, if you go to see, uh, any of the information on, uh, the internet or whatnot, this is a civilization, these were people who, uh, had, wore, wore their hair in cornrows in the same style that people wear today. And, uh, it, it's just, it's just amazing things, that's why I wanted to share that little tidbit, uh, that I discovered for Black History Month. Thank you, end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Fleuharty?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, one good report here, I heard it already tonight, was, uh, Union Street finally getting done, uh, we might, uh, have to have the ambulance over there when they finally start on this, cause we might have a few people having strokes, it's finally getting done, but, uh, at least it is getting done, and that's a good sign. Um, and I know everybody has talked about Rich, uh, Rich was in my ward, and I've got to know Rich very well, him and the Rich was in my ward, and I've got to know Rich very well, him and the family, Louise, his wife, and it's just sad that that had to happen, because Rich was a, Rich cared about this city, and I had a lot of long talks with Rich, and I'm going to miss Rich, because he kept me on my toes out there in the area, because if I wasn't doing what I was supposed to be doing, he'd be telling me to, you gotta get out of here, and he wasn't afraid to tell you either, but he will be missed. And so, I just want to, and, and that was just saying that, Rich, we, I personally miss you, and going to miss you, and rest in peace, and hopefully the family can put this behind them. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you. Mrs. Mizek.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to be here tonight. Tomorrow's good old Groundhog Day, and of course, we're all kind of sentimental tonight. First off, I too want to offer my condolences to the Novak family. We knew Rich as Mr. Car Man. His father was a car salesman from way back when, and he received a beautiful old Pontiac, because he loved old cars. And him and former Mayor Dan Poseck, my husband and several others, others were all what they call yearheads, but I knew Rich from way back when. Matter of fact, he was one of the after alumni of Garfield Heights High School af- after me, but not too far after me. As far as Jayden goes, that little, that young gentleman will be going far with his life. He was super. His mom, he liked baseball, and I can attribute to her being one of my ballplayers for the high school when we were out there with the baseball teams. And his dad, Mr. Super Drug Dressman, he was, he's been a good guy ever since him and Jen got together. I know most of these families very well, because I guess I've been here in Bedford the longest, and I value my time here. I want to give Mike an FYI, this afternoon on Channel Eight News, we had touched upon this subject earlier today, about the Code Red Alert in the middle of the night on Saturday morning, because of the abduction of the little girl. The, the chief from Newburgh Heights is in, in charge of some of the commanding positions on that Code Red Group. They're going to work on that, because a lot of other people called in about the hour of the night the phone rang, practically giving everybody else a stroke, because other people worry about other things, but the older people, as soon as that phone rings after ten o'clock, it's like something happened. And I can attest to that, too, because then you got a phone call about four o'clock in the morning. Well, supposedly, they're going to either curb the timing of these calls, we'll know at a later date, or eliminate some of the people that, of the older stature, of the older people, to get these calls during the middle of the night, so that doesn't upset their heart rhythm. And I, I heard Wally mention about one of his older day things that he always remembered. Well, last week, on January twenty-sixth, I received a text from a lady in Macedonia saying, "Happy namesake day." Now, if you're of the Catholic religion, which I am, you know, if you're not a saint, you can be one sooner or later. Well, my mom had her namesake on Palm Sunday, because she was Alma. Now, I received the text the other day, saying that January twenty-sixth was Saint Paula's name day, but back in four oh five, I was just a mother of the desert. Well, I'm everybody's mother sometime, but I says, they made it, they transpose the word desert. It should have been the mother of desserts, but, but we'll leave it at that. But everybody stay safe, have a good week, and Drug Mart is taking signups for shots. I got mine yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders.
Yeah, just make a quick statement here, tomorrow is Groundhog Day, and if you look outside tonight, you'll say, "Oh my." But that, that, tonight's is nothing. You wait till this coming weekend, we're supposed to go into the deep freeze, we could be down in zero or below again. So let's hope he doesn't see a shadow, and we can only have a few more weeks of this mess. But in any case, it is winter, it's the worst part usually, the last week in January and the first couple in February, so we're used to it being here in northeast Ohio, so we're hoping that we can get through this really quickly. It's a little bit harder with the COVID the way it is, because everybody's cooped up anyway, and that just makes it even harder to even get a slight chance of getting out. So I want to give my condolences to the Novak family also. I've worked with him for many years on the Strawberry Festival, because he ran the car show there for many years, and it's just not going to be the same if we ever even get a chance to have the Strawberry Festival again, but I'm hoping that will be the case, and we get this virus under control. So, as a quick reminder, during this time period, when we have unthinkable weather, especially if there's a winter storm advisory put out, don't park on the street, it's getting very difficult to get up and down. This snowplow about an hour ago came down my street, and he had a back out because of a parked car in the street. So, you know, it, it makes it very inconvenient for our crews to clean on rubbish day, it makes it extremely inconvenient to pick up the garbage cans, because your neighbor parks in front of your garbage can, and then they have to either pull out or, and then they leave it in the street half the time. Be courteous and remember, the street is there for temporary overflow, it's not a permanent extension of your driveway. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Spinks.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, just kind of piggyback off of what Dawn said. Yeah, please don't, with the weather getting bad, snow piling up and stuff, please do not put your trash can in the middle of the street. For one, the trash truck gets, can't get it, and it becomes a hazard for people trying to get out of their driveway hitting your trash can, so bad weather coming up, no parking, no trash cans on the streets, please. Condolences to the Novak family. I also had the pleasure last several years working with Rich with the Strawberry Festival, the car and motorcycle show. Each year, it seems that it got a little bit bigger and better every year. I know up to a couple of weeks ago, he was planning on trying to do something COVID-friendly this year with the car show, and the Strawberry Festival will be back, it probably won't be back this year. We are, talked to Vessi today. We've got some plans, some virtual things going on, some drive up different fundraisers, so we, we're working, putting our heads together to try to have some fundraisers COVID-friendly this year, because it's not going to go away anytime soon. So, so we are planning on things for the Historical Society. Let's see, what did I have? Jayden, he's awesome, such a townsman young man, owns so many avenues, friends with his mom on Facebook, so I get to see a lot of stuff on Facebook about Jayden, his piano playing is, is awesome, just what a, just an awesome young man, and it kind of says a lot about his parents, too, what great parents they are, and he's just, he's an amazing young man, and keep up the good work. Micah, did have a question, when you were talking about the trees and stuff, of course, I had a bunch a couple of weeks ago, taken off of Natalie and off of Grand, are those some, like, did have some residents ask if they were going to be replaced, or?
We have to, actually, we have to go off of a certain map that the county has regarding certain areas. So Clint and Jen were reviewing that, I don't know which area will qualify for our score to get us the highest. I can check that, and once we have an idea of what area we're going to look at, I'll share that, but I, I don't have that right now. I know they're working on it, they're working on completing the application, and then all of us will review it prior to submission, but I'm not aware of that just yet. So I don't want to say yes, but I don't want to say no either, it could. I just, I need to look at that and see what they're looking at with the county mapping.
Okay. Now, I'll put you on the spot again, any word on the, the flashing lights or the signs for the speeders? Because they were, it was crazy this weekend, I got several calls on Flora speeding, and that's a dead end.
Yeah, I included, I, I put that in last week, so we, we did receive our speed monitors, we did get those, we did not put them up last week, just due to the weather, but we are going to get them up. One of them's going to be a mobile one, will be able to move from location to location, and then another one's going to be a permanent one. We haven't identified where we're going to put that permanent one yet, but we, we do have ones that-
Two six five Grand, no.
We do have some that can be, that, that we do have some that'll be mobile, and the hope is that we'll get those up in the next week or so, but we do finally receive them.
Okay. Good, the kudos, because I mean, they're not even, and it's not just great, it seems to be, because I said at the window, and it's now to the point that they don't even slow down, and they have to see, you know, and it's some of the same cars. And kudos to our guys, I see them out there, I see them writing tickets, I see the reports that our, our tickets are up, I see them on Broadway, because they do, they use Broadway in that curve right there, it's crazy. And of course, we've had several wrecks there, so kudos to our guys, I know they're out there, and they're working with the weather and things the way it is, but on our new business tonight, I want to give kudos to you, Mike, and Frank, and all of our guys, the Fire Department, the Police Department, the Service Department, Water Department, all these guys. And I know when I first came on council, poor Mike's car was, I rode with him some, somewhere when we were going to some meeting or something, I literally thought that he was going to do like the Flintstones and get the car going with his feet, because there was a big hole in the floorboard, but he still got around in that car. So what the, what they do, what our city employees and, and maintenance and stuff do for these vehicles, so this is important tonight, and you know, these guys deserve, and it does look on our, our city of maintaining those vehicles, and, and, you know, sooner or later, you do have to purchase, because we depend on those, for the guys being able to do their jobs, and for their safety as well. So, Mike, Frank, thank y'all, because y'all do a lot with a little bit, and we appreciate that. I know myself on council, and I could probably speak for everybody else, too, we do really appreciate this year, last year has, this year's starting off tough, last year was really tough, and I think our city is where it's at, because of, of the work that you're, that you're doing. So, kudos to y'all, and, and thank y'all. As a resident myself, I, I thank you very much for that. End of report.
Thank you. And I think we all convey your failings to our, feelings to our administration for what they do every day. Do a great job. Again, thanks. Okay, let's get on with the new business. An ordinance authorizing ninety-eight forty-three dash twenty-one, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Larkin Greenwood Ford to purchase a twenty-twenty-one Ford police utility vehicle and declaring an emergency. Have a motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Janutus. Clerk, call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fleury?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Koche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Mizek. Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. This is a, what we try to do on a yearly basis, is look to replace anywhere from two to three police cruisers. This year, we're replacing two, this is the first of the two. And again, it is a twenty-twenty-one Ford police utility vehicle, moving with Larkin Greenwood Ford. Larkin did receive the State of Ohio Law Enforcement Contract through the state bidding process, and that's why we're going with them.
Thank you. Any questions? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fleury?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Koche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-eight forty-four dash twenty-one. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Ganley Chevrolet of Aurora to purchase a twenty-twenty-one Tahoe SUV and declaring an emergency. A motion for suspension by Fleury, second by Janutus. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fleury?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Koche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
A motion for third and final by Mizek, second by Spinks. Mike, you explained-
Yep, this is, this is the second one, and I'll, I'll just add two other items. This is the second of the police cruisers through Ganley Chevy of Aurora. Similar to Larkin, Ganley did receive the State of Ohio bid contract for this type of vehicle, which is why we're choosing to go through them. Both of these cruisers, we did include in the twenty-twenty-one budget process, so these are budgeted for, and I will say, you know, even, even all the way to our mechanics, I mean, they do a tremendous job and, and understand when, when a cruiser comes out of service, or when a, what, these two vehicles that we're replacing, you know, the vehicles, the last one that we moved over to another department out of police, had a hundred and sixty-eight thousand miles on it, and it, you know, it's showing, it's showing its age, you know, they're, they're, they're out there, so it's not like we're replacing vehicles with thirty-four, thirty or forty thousand miles. These vehicles that are getting replaced are well over a hundred thousand miles.
And that, that's a lot of miles in a city that's only five and a third square miles, so they're getting used. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fleury?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Koche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-eight forty-five dash twenty-one. An ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to apply and accept Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, NOPEC, twenty-twenty-one energized community grant funds. And can I have a motion for acceptance by Fleury, second by Saunders. Clerk, call the ward, the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fleury?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Koche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Mizek, second by Saunders. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. The last few years, we've been fortunate enough to receive grants through NOPEC. These grants have to be geared towards, it could be a wide range of projects, but they need to be focused on energy improvements, upgrades, things of that nature. In previous years, we did look at replacing some cooling, actually, it was a hot water, hot water tank system in the municipal center, my apologies, and we also, the lighting that we replaced along Willis, the decorative lighting, that was all funded out of a NOPEC grant. Similar grant is available this year that we're being awarded, thirty-three thousand dollars, although we have not identified a specific project yet, we have had some discussions, and once we do, that'll be shared with council, but what we need to do tonight is pass this ordinance simply to accept this grant and accept the thirty-three thousand dollars. And kudos to Jennifer Kuzma and Frank Ambosi, who worked through this project.
Thank you. Questions? Seeing none. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fleury?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Koche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-eight forty-six dash twenty-one. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with J Auto Group for the purchase of three twenty-twenty-one GMC Sierra twenty-five hundred HD two-wheel-drive regular cab, hundred forty-two inch pickups, and declaring- two-wheel drive regular cab, hundred forty-two inch pickups and declaring an emergency. A motion for suspension. By Flea Hardy, second by Spinks. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Flea Hardy?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
A motion for third and final. By Janutus, second by Saunders. Uh, Mike, again.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the next couple of ordinance, ordinances address, um, equipment vehicles, um, in the water department. Um, some of this obviously will allow the, uh, existing vehicles to be transferred over to the service. Um, we're doing this so the general fund will not take the hit, um, on, on, uh, these expenses. All of this has been budgeted for. Um, looking into this, again, similar to police, you know, these pickup trucks that we're going to be replacing. Um, two of them are, two of the ones being replaced are two thousand and twos. The third is a two thousand and three, so they're approaching twenty years of age. Um, we did receive another quote through Valley Ford. Um, it was just about six hundred dollars more. Um, our recommendation is to keep this local and make the purchase through J Auto Group here in Bedford.
Thank you. Uh, any questions? Seeing none. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Flea Hardy?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And ordinance number ninety eight forty seven dash twenty one. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Valley Ford Truck, Inc. For the purchase of one twenty 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 two Ford four fifty regular click cab, four by four dump truck with stainless steel dump body and declaring an emergency. Have a motion for suspension. By Saunders, second by Flea Hardy. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Flea Hardy?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And ordinance number ninety eight forty eight dash twenty one.
One second.
You did do third and final.
Oh, I didn't.
Not a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, we'll revoke it then. A motion for third and final. By Janutus, second by Spinks. Uh, call the roll again, please. My apologies.
Janutus?
Yes.
Flea Hardy?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number ninety eight forty eight dash twenty one. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of one twenty twenty one Freightliner truck M two one oh six single axle cab and chassis equipped with a new vac all model AS dash thirteen combination, street sweeper and catch basin sewer cleaner through O dot contract zero two three dash zero one. Lot to say. Uh, a motion for suspension. By Janutus, second by Flea Hardy. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Flea Hardy?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion for third and final. By Saunders, second by Janutus. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we have two pieces of equipment right now, um, that are in extremely poor condition. Actually, our vac hall, uh, which is a nineteen ninety one, um, really is not able to be utilized, um, as it is completely rotted out. Uh, last year, we did identify some significant rot in the undercarriage of our current street sweeper, which is a two thousand and three. Um, by this ordinance, um, it's actually purchasing a combination vehicle. Um, both a vac hall and a street sweeper. By making this purchase and, and buying this combination piece, we're actually going to be saving about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in comparison to if we bought two separate. Um, our recommendation is obviously to move forward with this, uh, Valley Freightliner, um, is, uh, this is a state, uh, purchased through the state cooperative purchasing agreement, uh, which is the, why we only need to obtain one quote. Um, this is a much needed, uh, improvement to two pieces of, uh, equipment that have currently, um, ran its course as far as, um, condition. And kudos to our mechanics for, um, putting Band-Aids on them, um, all these years.
Questions? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Flea Hardy?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety eight forty nine dash twenty one. An ordinance authorizing the city manager and the finance director to modify the wage and benefits for police lateral transfers and declaring an emergency. Motion for suspension. By Spinks, second by Flea Hardy. Uh, clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Flea Hardy?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion for third and final. By Saunders, second by Mezek. Uh, Mike?
I'll take this one. Yeah.
Frank? Okay, good.
In line with our civil service, uh, updates and, uh, new rules and regulations, we're allowing the ability to accept lateral transfers, which are being done all over in the, uh, Cleveland area. And in line with that, there's a lot of competition for qualified candidates for police officers and firefighters, obviously, but, uh, at this point, we've worked with the, uh, police department in line and the unions in line with what would be acceptable incentives that we could offer, uh, to, uh, candidates coming to the city of Bedford. Now therefore, that the civil service or the administration can, uh, authorize any types of incentives or pay or any of these items. We go to council this evening to ask for them to, uh, look at accepting, uh, two items that we felt were incentives that we could offer, uh, in, in line with, uh, what unions would accept too. And one being the payroll. So for example, that we are accepting applicants that have at least one year of experience in another department as a, uh, a regular certified officer or equivalent thereof. And in doing so, the pay scale of what they would be accustomed to would be more than the beginning scale of what we do in the city. So therefore, a person with one year, for example, would come on board with the one-year, uh, lateral transfers, what we're recommending, uh, to the pay scale of the police officer in one year, eighteen months, two months, the same thing. We're taking that all the way up to three years on our, uh, program that we have with the, uh, in our scale with the unions. And we asked council to, uh, in line with this, adopt this ordinance this evening. The other part that we have in line with this is in regards to what we could offer in regards to vacation. A candidate coming from another city or from another entity will have already had one year experience and already be receiving two weeks of vacation. In line with that, depending upon when this person's hired, after a ninety-day period with the city, we would look to, uh, offer that, uh, candidate the ability to take, uh, vacation. However, they would not have any seniority on the staff whatsoever. They can only earn that while being an employee of the city of Bedford. But nonetheless, after ninety days having the ability to, uh, take time off and vacation with their families and so forth. Uh, in line with that, um, vacation, we, uh, we do have a clawback provision. We would require that if the employee did not stay with the city for at least a year, uh, they would have to pay that vacation time back if they take that. Uh, so at this, this evening, I asked council to look favorably upon this. Uh, civil services looked at this, uh, but of course, and the administration, uh, the police chief has, as well as his staff, recommended, uh, this, uh, program and, uh, we asked council to approve it this evening. We will, we have not talked to the firefighters of no means by this, but we're leaving the door open to start this process, uh, for the future. Uh, if they need to look at this program also.
But also Frank, the union has consented to this, correct?
We had an email from them saying they wouldn't be opposed to it, basically. Uh, yeah.
Thank you. Questions? Seeing none. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Flea Hardy?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Uh, ordinance number ninety eight fifty dash twenty one. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Hall Public Safety to outfit the, the one twenty twenty one Ford utility vehicle and declaring an emergency. Can I have a motion for suspension, please? By Spinks, second by Flea Hardy. Clerk, call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Flea Hardy?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
A motion for third and final. By Janutus, second by Flea Hardy. Mike?
He, thank you, Mayor. Uh, these next two are, uh, these next two ordinances are the, um, the cost associated with outfitting both of the, uh, two new police cruisers that were, uh, passed earlier, um, in tonight's agenda. Um, we did receive two quotes. Hall was the cheaper of the two, coming in at fifteen thousand eight hundred, uh, twenty-five dollars. The next quote we received was, um, over seventeen thousand six hundred. So they were the cheaper of the two. Uh, we've worked with Hall in the past, recommend moving forward with them. Um, they are a little bit higher than what we've paid in previous years. And that is because these quotes do include, um, the additional hardware, um, and components needed for, uh, when we're able to install the new cameras that we passed also earlier this evening.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Flea Hardy?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety eight fifty one dash twenty one. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Hall Public Safety to outfit one twenty twenty one Chevrolet Tahoe and declaring an emergency. I have a motion for suspension. By Flea Hardy, second by Spinks. Uh, clerk, call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Flea Hardy?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Uh, motion for third and final. By Mezek, second by Flea Hardy. Uh, again, Mike, as much as, same thing.
Same thing.
So we'll outfit good. You can't have a vehicle without any lights or sirens and all that stuff, could we? Uh, okay, any questions? Seeing none. Clerk, call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Flea Hardy?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And finally. Resolution number twenty five sixty dash twenty one. The council of the city of Bedford of Cuyahoga County, Ohio, met at a duly called and authorized meeting of the council on the date set forth below. Such meeting being duly called pursuant to a notice stating that time, place and purpose of the meeting received by all council, council members. And the following resolutions were made, seconded and adopted by those present at the meeting. Frank or Mike, who wants to say that one?
I could take this one. The, uh, police and fire employees, there's a, every once in a while, we have one that's on active duty in the military. And when they're in active duty, they, duty, they have, uh, while they're out, they have the ability to buy back their pension, uh, that they would normally pay out of their paychecks as they get paid, but it's not taken out at that time. Later on, they have the right to buy it back, but they also would like to buy it back in the form of deferring that pension, uh, to be paying taxes on it later. And in doing so, they need a legislation to authorize this for the pension board. So the pension board recommends this legislation that we have on the table this evening. So in regards to police and fire, if they ever decide to do this, which we do have one employee, uh, waiting and pending on this, uh, decision, uh, so that he could defer his taxes like everyone else, basically, um, and in the pension plan. So I asked council to look favorably on this evening and, in regards to that.
And, and again, this is nothing new. This has been done for, uh, decades.
Yeah, other cities do this out there. We just had a legislation passed now that we need this.
Yep. Okay, good. Questions? Seeing none. Clerk, call the roll.
Um, do we have a motion, uh, to suspend? Who made? No.
Uh, it was, uh, who made the suspension?
John said earlier, we needed it.
Yeah.
We didn't need it. Oh.
We do need it. We do need it.
But you didn't ask it.
You didn't ask it.
You sure?
Yeah.
Checked it off, but, uh, okay. Motion for suspension. I know we did it. Spinks, second by Janutus. And call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Flea Hardy?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And motion for third and final. By Saunders, second by Mezek. Call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Flea Hardy?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Hey, thank you.
And now comes, uh, hearing of citizens. Uh, if you have a comment, uh, contact, uh, city manager at BedfordOH.gov. City manager at BedfordOH.gov. Do we have anything, Mike?
Uh, I have one question. Um, Frank, if you'd like to, or we can, I can contact them, um, in the morning. They didn't leave a name, so I'm not sure if this is meant for the floor or not, but, um, the question is, what is the effect of the proposed ordinance for lateral transfers for existing employees? How does this affect those employees that have come from other departments?
It does not affect them at this point. We, uh, plan on doing a, um, uh, written test, uh, within every two years. So therefore, if they wanted to do lateral, they would have done so. We already talked about this. And therefore, they would always be under three years, uh, on that, uh, on the transfer. So therefore, they would not be at the high end of that. Uh, they have every right to start all over as a, uh, and they're in the written test, uh, what we give those also. That's why a lot of cities will follow up with a lateral with a written test.
Okay.
Yeah, we need name and address for questions to be put in the record.
Yeah.
And, and I don't think I mentioned, no seniority would ever be given to a person on, uh, for the city of Bedford. They have to earn it, working for the city of Bedford. I don't know if I mentioned that earlier, but, uh, they just don't get that automatically coming in. So if they got time to take off for vacation, they'd be last in line, uh, coming on board.
Okay.
There are, I'm refreshing it one more time here. That was the only, uh, question for this evening.
Okay. And with that, can I have a motion for adjournment? By Flea Hardy, second by Spinks. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Flea Hardy?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Well, thank you, everybody for listening and to council. Have a great, uh, week and, uh, enjoy the day.